...the regular reading of the Board of Trustees of East Central School District on July 16, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. Ms. Corrigan, can you call the board?
Mr. Del Rizell?
She's here.
She's here? Mr. Garza?
Here.
James Hoke? Monty Preston?
Here.
Steve Brant?
There.
Mr. President, Mary Horn.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We move on to Item 2, Prayer and Lit. Tell us who we have in mind.
Ms. Callis?
Okay, please, please stand by ahead. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for these years here who are coming together to make decisions for our school district. Lord, we pray for them. We pray for our constituents. We pray for our students and our teachers during this uncertain time. Lord, we pray that you will give us wisdom to make good decisions for our community. We pray that you will see us home safely. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Callis. Do you have any awards to present?
We have one recognition.
All right, we will add three.
Thank you, Superintendent Tuskano.
All right.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you Superintendent Tuskano and Board of Trustees. Tonight's awards and recognition look a little different as because we are recognizing all 3200 staff back at East Central ISD. One thing is for sure, diversity reveals character. This past spring, during unprecedented time, who we are as a community and as a school district was revealed. We love our students, we stay united, we focus on what we can control, never make excuses and work hard to get the job done. Our staff never stops serving kids. Operations then cease. Leadership has been in the building, working to get students and families what they need to be successful. Teachers learned new ways to use technology and worked whenever students and parents were available. We are grateful for the great people who served on our child nutrition and transportation teams because they never shut down children in our community. Similarly, custodians of grounds, maintenance teams took care of district facilities and they look sharp. Miraculously, our distance learning model was rapidly stood up in two weeks' time, which is a testament to the talent and tireless effort of our curriculum team. Our campus administration and technology specialists have been invaluable in working to resolve issues with connectivity. Our communications efforts greatly increased to not only distribute information, but to receive and process feedback. In East Central ISD, we have always believed that within every difficulty lies opportunity. We are so excited about the, about all the possibilities that the pandemic has enabled us to see more clearly. We are in the midst of an unprecedented time in the history of public education, and we have the opportunity to transform it into something much better for all kids. Since June 1st, we have been working on preparations to teach remotely and face-to-face for students who need it and families who prefer it. Together, we are proudly united. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, my friends. Move on to Item 4, Public Comments. Callis, do you have any public comments?
Yes. Now, in person again. Good evening. Mr. Tuskano, President Massengill, we've got four public comments that were made online on our Google form, and I'll read them to you. The first one is from Patty Whitlock. As a parent of two high school students, I know the board will make their best decision for our students on how they will return in August. I would like the board to do their best to stick with our back-to-school date of August 18th, 2020. I have a senior who with 43 of her classmates are scheduled to leave for a trip to Europe on June 4th, 2021. I'm praying things are okay in the world by then, but I would hate for these kids to miss graduation because we moved the start date. If we're going too remote for the beginning, does it have to affect the start of school date? Next, from Michelle Rodriguez. Good evening. As a parent in the district, I would first like to say thank you for creating an avenue for us to add our public comments to the board meetings during this time when Governor Abbott has prohibited gatherings of more than 10 people. Secondly, I appreciate the efforts of the district and especially Superintendent Tuskano to communicate to the ECISD family in a genuine and transparent manner. It was very bold of you, Mr. Tuskano, and it did calm many fears that parents and staff were having at the moment. The purpose of my comment is to request that the district take advantage of TEA's flexibility and begin the school year with three weeks of virtual remote instruction for all students. If school districts do not take advantage of this opportunity, I feel like that our city's local health authority will mandate that campuses close, and then the district will have less control on bringing selected students to campus. Starting the year with three weeks virtual for all students also allows for teachers to be better prepared when the time comes that they have the balance in-person and virtual learning. It also allows for parents to ease back into the school year without the worry that we're sending our children back too soon. We know that the lack of authority is what is making teachers and parents uncomfortable with going back to school, and we look to you, the Board of Trustees, who have the authority to make these decisions, to lead our community and to help keep our children, teachers, staff, and administration safe. Thank you for your time. Next, from James Bryant. Given that the virus may spread through the air via aerosol transmission, especially in closed spaces, according to USCDCP WHO, and that measures such as HEPA filtering and UV sterilization with sufficient air movement can help control the virus, please describe the conditions and capabilities of the HVAC system in our schools and if any of these countermeasures are part of those systems. Next, from Matthew Lauterbach. I work in the environmental health and safety consulting for one of the top firms in the state of Texas. I was born and raised in Nebraska and moved to Texas in 1995. I am thoroughly disappointed in the leadership in Texas during this alleged health emergency. It seems basics taught in health and science are being thrown out the window. I encourage all leaders of this board to make leadership decisions and not bandwagon unscientific and emotionally charged decisions. Even with all the questionable data coming from the CDC, they reported the mortality rate is still lower than that than the seasonal flu, along with it not being able to qualify as a pandemic anymore. Further, the PCR tests they are using to determine a positive COVID-19, as reported, only checks for SARS-CoV-2 family of viruses, of which COVID-19 only has 80% RNA that is similar. The tests that can even, the tests can't even tell you if the virus is active, which alive or infectious or dead, not infectious. That being said, these tests couldn't even be used as evidence in a court of law because of the scientific inaccuracies that attorneys would obliterate. Most local and county and state on-the-fly health protocols have no basis in sound science that has been peer reviewed. As Texans, I always thought leaders were supposed to do the right things for kids, so I encourage you all to make sound leadership decisions with the facts and data readily available. I call on all the leaders of the board to enlighten and correct local, county, and state officials that have made irrational decisions that have been neither fact or science-based. Raise the trail of leadership in the city instead of riding on the emotionally fashionable everybody's doing and bandwagoning. They, true is both parties have, the truth is both parties have failed the citizens of Texas concerning leadership during this crisis. I hope that level-headed people would understand that children are much more precious than politics and irrational fear, so much so that it would deprive our kids in the East Central ISD of the much-needed social, educational, and community interaction that can only be experienced in person rather than a digital artificial in their education. I will be watching closely every single decision made and passing it through the filter of peer-reviewed science. Thank you. That concludes public comments.
Can you provide copies of that to all the Board of Trustees? Very much. All right, we move on to Item 5, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Tuskano?
Sir, Trustees, this month's personnel report is in your electronic packet. As is always the case during the months of June, July, this is our most active times of the year. During this particular month, we always cross-reference previous years to see if the attrition is trending in any particular way. This year is very similar to recent years in terms of activity. We're doing a really good job recruiting and filling the positions that are vacated and are confident that when we re-enter in August, it will be fully staffed with quality employees. And as is always the case, if you'd like any additional information regarding any of the activity in this month's report, let me know with that.
Any more questions? We move on to Item 8, Upcoming Bits.
Sir, really quickly, Trustees, in your this lady's packet, months of July and August, a couple of things that I wanted to point out. Our district leadership team will be returning on the 22nd and 23rd for our annual leadership retreat. This year, we'll be holding that in Patterson, which gives us the ability to safely distance all of our leadership corps. The facility, as you know, has classrooms around that facility, which allows us to break into groups of teams that are campus-based or departmental to do work, what we normally do again, ensuring that everybody's following the guidelines as we have since the pandemic pandemic ensued and follow all the protocols for making sure everybody's safe. In addition to that, we do have new teachers showing up on the 29th and 30th. The 30th will be a welcome for all of them in legacy middle school. Then in August, as the summer lines down, we'll bring all staff back on the 5th for our annual kickoff. This year's kickoff is going to be held in a watch party kind of platform where our employees will be at their departments and at their campuses. Some staff will be in the Patterson Live, but the goal is to have an annual kickoff event as due to get everybody together and excited and direction set for the upcoming school year. But again, to adhere to the protocols and the guidance that are in place. We'll do that in a watch party format so that we can control size of groups and spacing and distancing, all of those sorts of things. And so we're pretty excited about that and look forward to the start of the great year. The district will be returning to five-day work weeks, beginning last week in July. And then on the 15th, the board did schedule, last time we met, 15th is a Saturday, a goal-setting workshop, our annual goal-setting workshop. And then on the 17th is our back-to-school kickoff, it's our first day of school. And as you know, Trustees, staff has been working hard since the initial closure in March. We've been engaged with the community, we've been engaged with our staff, and what we've been doing in the course with the guidance from TEA is preparing the stand-up, a really flexible model that is delivering instruction in multiple ways, as you're aware. We feel confident, you know, we've had teachers back who are working alongside curriculum to stand up the remote models, to stand up our learning management systems, teacher classroom management systems. It's stage the experienced teachers will have when they return, so that while the work is different, it's not boring. And if we're able to deliver quality face-to-face instruction as well as quality remote instruction, whether synchronous, asynchronous, or a combination of the few or all of them. We have been surveying our community, and at this particular time, we've heard from about 40% of our parents, many of which are high school parents, most of which. And what we're looking at now is in the neighborhood of 50% that are comfortable sending kids back face-to-face and declining. And about 50% at this particular time feel like a remote option is in their best interest. A couple of things that I shared with the community last week that I'll continue to make sure they understand about TEA's guidance is that, you know, for students who are here face-to-face and for students who are at home learning remotely, the grading guidelines, the learning standards are exactly the same. In addition to that, the compulsory attendance laws are also, we will say, in the spring, compulsory attendance requirements were not in place. And so what it means for families is that if they choose a remote option, they're going to, while we'll be providing the instruction, they're going to have to proctor their child's day-to-day learning. And that's going to be a huge lift on many households, and we just want them to be aware of that requirement because they have to demonstrate attendance either synchronously with classes being taught or asynchronously, they're going to have to meet one of three conditions to demonstrate engagement in that 24-hour period of that day. So essentially, if today was a school day by midnight tonight, they would have had to have met one of those requirements asynchronously to be counted in attendance. And so the compulsory attendance laws work like this. If you have three unexcused absences days or parts of days in a full week period, you're violation of the law. If you have 10 days or parts of days in a six-month period, you're in violation of the law. And in addition to that, students have to attend, excused or unexcused, that doesn't matter at this point, 90% of available school days in the school calendar year, or they cannot receive credit and they cannot be promoted. And that's very important because, again, if they choose a remote option, which very well may be what's most appropriate for many of our families, at least initially, they're going to have to support that daily activity at home. So we're going to have schedules for the kids to follow. If they're synchronous, it'll be as if they were at school. But then there's asynchronous flexibility with the ability for them to go in when it works best for that child and their family. But again, they have to demonstrate daily progress. They can't, for example, do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays work and complete it, turn it in Monday. They're still only going to get credit for being in school Monday. And on the other end, we continue, if they can't turn in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday's work on Friday, they're only going to get credit for being in school on Friday. So for academic purposes, that would be good. They turned everything in and hopefully did it well, their grades might look good. But for truancy purposes, attendance accounting purposes, the agency says they have to demonstrate evidence every day. And so those are the guidelines, the guidelines from the agency as it currently exists. And we're just trying to have open conversations with our parents so that they're aware. And of course, should that guidance change, as many things have been changing on a daily, weekly basis, we'll communicate that. But that's currently the conditions that exist. And so there's been a lot of talk in the last week about the three-week flexible period where, you know, the bottom line at this point is we have to offer face-to-face instruction for any family that wants their child to have face-to-face instruction. If we don't do that, we won't qualify for funding. The exception is the first three weeks of school, as was referred to earlier. And during the first three weeks of school, districts have the ability to start remotely, to start for a smaller percentage of students in the buildings. There's flexibility for us to do what we think makes the most sense in our community. And we'll receive funding during that grant-up period, that three-week period. There has been talk this week that that would be extended, that has not been confirmed. But there is a caveat of that first three-week flexibility period, and that caveat is that for any child in our district that feels like they cannot access remote instruction, if you choose to be all remote, we have to provide access to face-to-face instruction. So it's flexible, definitely, but not as flexible as it may sound as it relates to children who may need face-to-face, given their access or their needs. And so we're still working to provide face-to-face instruction every day. We're still working to stand up a really robust instructional learning model remotely. And we still intend to provide all the families in our community the options that best meet their needs. But I'll summarize it saying, that safety is our number-one priority of the board and of the staff. But learning has to go on, and students learn best face-to-face. That for a small period of time, we can probably manage. But we've not been at school since March. And students, even our highest achieving students, either stop learning or regress if it's exclusively remote. That's what the data suggests. And for our students who have already been behind pre-COVID-19, they regress at accelerated rates. So while I think a combination of face-to-face and remote might be a lesson learned for the future of what school might look like, at this particular point in time, if we stay in a remote-only environment for any kid for a sustained amount of time, the outcomes are probably not going to be as favorable as if we can at least get some face-to-face with them as well. And so, you know, we're going to follow all the guidance, the directives, if you will, that are handed down as we have been doing so. And we're hopeful that there'll be some local flexibility given to the board, as this board has always been very mindful in making the best decisions for its community. And, you know, just know that your staff is working hard, your staff can't wait to get your kids back, but your staff understands that we're in a situation where your direction might be that you have to be a little flexible early on. But regardless, we're ready, willing, and able, we're going to stand up multiple models of teaching and learning that we believe are going to be much better than what we were able to do in the spring, and they're going to get better as time goes on. And so as Brandon mentioned earlier, we never shut down, and our staff has been working really hard, and they continue to work hard in preparation for August 17th.
Mr. Tuskano?
Yes, sir.
And I understand that parents have a choice, do you go remote or come face-to-face? Is this what I'm understanding?
At this particular time, yes, sir.
Now, the ones that want to go remote, they have to notify the district that they want to go remote. How are we going to, that's you go ahead.
Yeah, so the guidance is, we can't make, we can't ask for a firm decision until two weeks before school starts. So we did survey the community, and we asked for just a, just a general idea, if you had to come back today, what you would be comfortable with, so we could try to start scheduling. But as I mentioned earlier, we've got about 30, maybe 3,000, 3,500 respondents with 10,200 students. So it hasn't been a, it's been a good sample size, but it hasn't been everyone. And so our principals have been calling families who didn't respond to the survey, just to have a conversation about, you know, if you have any questions, we can have to answer, here's what our intentions are to fall. You know, obviously, you have flexibility, you can choose one or the other or a combination of them, right? But for scheduling purposes, we're trying to get an indication so we can start to build out logistics. But we're going to ask again, as it gets closer, for something a little firmer. The agency has given us the ability to ask for a six-week commitment. Of course, in the best interest of each child, that's still flexible. And so why we're asking for six weeks, to give something a try for six weeks, one way or the other, is that, you know, consistency is best for kids and consistency is best for adults, right? But if a child is struggling remotely and the family determines it's in their best interest to get back to school face-to-face, they can do that at any time. And if a child was coming to school face-to-face and the family felt that, given the conditions with COVID-19, that they were a little less comfortable at any point in time of the year, they could pull back and experience learning remotely. A lot of questions we received are, what happens if our child's homesick? You know, are they going to be absent and be in trouble with truancy and all of these things that we know are in place? And the reality of it is, in the past, it could be, depending on whether it was an excused absence or not. But in our current situation, if a child's at home ill, even with COVID-19, if on a day-to-day basis they don't strong enough to log in remotely or, you know, synchronously or asynchronously, they could be in school that day, just from home. And so the reality of it is, there's some flexibility allowed to us that's never been allowed, that gives us the most opportunities to be and be where they're at and a family where they're at at any point in time throughout the year. Now, is that a huge lift on the staff side, you know? Absolutely. And that's what we're working really hard at this point in time to prepare. So when the staff comes back, we've got a, we've got a very manageable platform for them to be able to deliver instruction within knowing that we may be partially face-to-face, partially remote, all remote, all face-to-face. I mean, the fluctuations throughout the years of COVID-19, we have to adapt to all of it, you know?
And I can keep that with my, Mr. Tuskano. UIO is granting the athletes, if they want to go remote, they will still be able to, that's your strategy, all right?
So UIO has given that decision-making authority to local school districts?
Okay.
Yes, sir. And so our recommendation at this point in time is that if a child chooses remote and is engaged remotely, that they could participate, but it's outside the school day. The likelihood that they would feel comfortable attending is unlikely. But the reality of it is that they're in school and they're engaged and they're making academic progress, and we're receiving an ADA. Now, we're not comfortable with them coming and going to athletic period during the day.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if they're not coming to school face-to-face, they won't be able to do that. But they could participate outside the school day. If they chose, they would have the opportunity.
Yeah, I don't know if this is appropriate, but the UIO is talking about flipping the seasons, is any?
There hadn't been any of those decisions made, but that, those conversations have been part of their brainstorming of possible solutions. We have heard several school districts across the state have postponed reentry, which also meant they postponed athletics. And so that's causing some challenges, even in the local area. I know that several Austin ISD postponed athletics, and there are several school districts in the area that had some games scheduled that they're no longer able to have. So that's, that's one thing that's been talked about, is maybe flipping. Another thing that's been talked about is no non-district games, and we don't start the season until the district, assuming conditions improve. And so they're, like they're, UIO is trying its best to be creative about different ways to potentially salvage some degree of extracurricular activity, but...
One more question. Our baseball team is working on it again?
So strength and conditioning is back in play. And so part of strength and conditioning this year is UIO allowed all school districts to do sport-specific activities as well. So every sport is two hours a week, and so they can do strength and conditioning, and then they can do sports because it's skill work, and that's every sport.
Just every sport?
Yes, sir.
There's no violation?
No, sir. No, sir. It's a new, it's a new rule, it was authorized for this year.
I can, people are asking, I'm...
Yes, sir. And I believe that's everything in August, other than August 20th is our next regularly scheduled reporting.
Do you have time to request this?
Uh, what was it, 8:30? I believe the last time you guys met, you all said 8:30 a.m. on the Saturday?
So we have, yeah, 8:30 a.m. on it, because we have 8:30.
8:30 is what we have on here, but I didn't get a 100% file. I know that's what we thought, so.
All right, we move on. You got anything?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, we move on to Item 6, Action to the Nino. Item A, Communities and School Service Delivery Agreement, 2020, 2021. Mr. Tuskano?
Yes, sir. Trustees, as you recall, we entered into a partnership with communities and schools for this year and have the ability to do that via a TEA grant, expansion grant. And so we've had four communities and schools counselors, if you will, that have supported our counseling department, our EC cares program, as well as our social worker in providing... in providing a wide range of wraparound services for our students and families in addition to what we've always been able to provide. And so unfortunately, we closed in the spring. But fortunately, they were engaged the entirety of the time with all of our efforts to serve our community and our students in greatest need, families in greatest need. And so I would say, and Ashley, if you have anything to add, that at least our first semester in experience with communities and schools was very positive and promising. They didn't let us down. And so the agreement was a three-year agreement. If you recall, we would come back annually to the board to determine if they wanted to continue with that agreement. And so we're coming to you tonight for your consideration of continuing the communities and schools partnership for the 2020-2021 school year.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Were there... Do we have any hiccups with the coordination between their management and our management? I know we were concerned at one point about our rules.
Right, right.
Was there any... The radiations were bad, or is this honeymoon period really a place where everybody's overly working?
Yeah, I think, and again, Ashley, since you work most closely with these employees, what I can say is they fit perfectly. They seem to be our employees. They worked under our direction. I think they did a great job taking the characteristics and attributes that we were expecting and did a great job filling those positions with those kinds of employees. And Ashley, if you want to just talk a little bit about, you know, the staff that he had assigned to us and how our recognition with us has been?
Sure. So as you know, it's our goal and essential to be a preferred partner. And you can tell that that is also communities and schools. That is their goal as well. They hired people who are on top of it. They were almost bugging me multiple times a day, sometimes calling me. That didn't really bother me, but you know what I'm saying? They were calling. Their leadership team, very communicative. What can we do? We want to be a part of all of your efforts during the shutdown. They came. Every time that we went grocery shopping, we had them helping us whenever we were gathering things for their EC cares to distribute. They were working with administrators and counselors to help identify the neediest kids and sort of really get to know whose families. They made lots of efforts to be at the home visits. They did home visits with our counselors and with our assistant principals during COVID-19 shutdown, every Thursday, to our neediest families. And they spend the time to really get to know the family and the needs of the family. And they were really trying to hit the base of the fire as far as what is going on with the parents and how can they help the parents so that the parents are stable, so that they can, you know, have that stable home for the children. They offered counseling. They've done, you know... I just can't say enough about the individuals. They really looked at what we wanted in employees, and they saw after those attributes and those qualities. And I'll share one story that I could tell lots. But one of them was our... One of our CIS counselors goes up to the door with a bag of food with our own counselor, and the little boy is all excited. And the little sister comes up, and they're like, is there milk? Did you bring milk? Where, you know, is there... You know, we want milk. We need milk. And so the CIS counselor drove around to about five different convenience stores until she found milk and went back to that house. So those are the kinds of people that we've... That they have put in partnership with us. And it's been... They have been a blessing to work with. I get a report weekly about their contact and all the services that they've provided. Vision vouchers, counseling, housing, you know, financial aid for housing. And that's going on at all of our schools. And I have not heard one complaint from any administrator about them not wanting to service an extra kid or any kid that we turn over to them. We have not heard one word about our kids going to school or anything like that. I mean, they're constantly willing to work with our kids and give them the services and the things that they need. So they have been a blessing to us. They partnered with us, like I said, in amazing ways during the shutdown. And they were there. They were shopping with us on Tuesdays. They were packaging with us on Wednesdays. And they were delivering with us on Thursdays. So all in. They've been all-in with us, and we're very appreciative. I thank you, our counselors, our administrators, our EC cares team. We thank you for, you know, supporting us in that partnership.
Ms. Dale, do you have any questions or...?
Hold your phone.
No?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the Communities and School Service Delivery Agreement as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the Communities and School Service Delivery Agreement as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion for Mr. Steve Ryan. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Coria Barantos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item B. Revision of the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Scott?
Sir, Mr. President, this is the time of year when the district is required to bring any recommended amendments to the Student Code of Conduct. And the district is responsible for aligning the Chapter 37 of the Text Education Code by establishing board-approved standards for noncompliance and appropriate action on the district's part. Revisions to the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct are highlighted in yellow. There were a small handful of revisions. We did a lot of work in the last couple of years with TASM to stand up a really robust and accurate Student Code of Conduct with our current practices and guidelines that the board expects. And so the revisions that we put in place today either reflected the most recent statutory requirements or some recommended verbiage that TASM sent our way. And so if you have any answer, any questions about any of the updates that were recommended? And bringing to consideration... Yes, sir.
Under the discipline consideration technique, there was a phrase that said, "improving restorative practice."
Yes, sir. Tell me what that means. So restorative practices are the teaching piece. And so one thing that we know is that when students misbehave, there certainly needs to be consequences that are aligned to the nature of the behavior that are appropriate. But what we know is that as children, they may or may not know what other options they have available and the impact to their behavior. So restorative practices are a way to teach children what other options they had available, what may have been more appropriate than the action they took. And because you did that, this is what it did to the other kid, or this is how a major teacher feel, or this is how a major classmates feel, or whatever the case. And it's a combination of giving the kid some additional options for improving future behavior and making sure the kid knows, once you mess up, you got to make it right. And so restorative options say that as administration, when we administer discipline, it's not just going to be the punishment. It's going to be a combination of both. And we're going to start with the restoration piece before we go into the punishing piece, not the other way around. And so that's kind of what happens.
That's all, I think.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Anybody got anything else? Ms. Dale?
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the proposed revisions to the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the proposed revisions to the 2019-2020 Student Code of Conduct. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion for Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Louie Priestus. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on to this. Go to item C, Consideration and Possible Approval of the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B Plan Inter-Local Agreement.
Sir, Mr. President, so what we're bringing tonight for your consideration will provide another option for employees to choose for their retirement investment. Teachers typically have traditionally always had an option to invest in a 403B. And it's still an option. The challenge with only offering a 403B today is that it's been deregulated. Previously, TEA was able to send out a list of approved investment providers that teachers could... Educators could select from. At least there was a level of screening, if you will, to give us some direction. The thing about a 403B is there are hundreds of investments you can choose to make. And as we all know, when you make decisions about what you're investing in, sometimes the details are broad. And you really need the guidance of a fiduciary to help you understand and, most importantly, the fees that could be incorporated. So in other words, not all 403Bs and not all investment providers have the same fees. They're not created equal. And so the more aware educator or PRS employees that have a fiduciary to help guide them, you know, can make really good decisions with regard to their 403 and really maximize the benefit for retirement. And so that's still an option. A 457 is similar, but different in a few ways. One of the main ways, the most important way, is it's just one investment. And you don't have to make a decision about, do I choose this insurance company or that? Or is it this mutual fund or that? You don't have to study the details about the difference. You just make a decision to start a 457, and you choose, do I want my risk to be low, medium, or high? And how much do I want to invest? So it's a lot more cut and dry. The return benefits are very comparable. But the other differences are a 403B, if an employee were to choose to pull that out before it matured, the IRS will penalize the employee 10% of their investment plus charge them income tax on that year's amount that they pulled out. Where a 457, if an employee were to need to pull that out before it matured, there would not be an IRS 10% penalty. But you would still have to pay taxes on it. So it just offers another option. And together, the investment limits, annual investment limits, if an employee were to choose both, could expand the amount of money that they could invest in a given year, which could benefit some employees who have the ability to do that. They both have catch-up provisions, which later in your career, you could invest more once you meet that catch-up age threshold. And so again, in the interest of benefits to our employees, we believe that this adds another option. They could give more employees comfort in starting a retirement investment program. And for those who already have a 403B, it's another option to add and own if they so chose, or to transfer over to one person to the other. So we're bringing it to you tonight for your consideration as an option for our employees, another option for our employees to consider when they think about their retirement investment.
Money is put into this 457, is it taxed before billing?
Yes, sir, it's taxed deferred. So it's taxed... It is... It is pulled out before your income is taxed.
Pre-tax.
Pre-tax.
It's pre-tax, so it's not a way.
Ms. Dale, any questions?
No.
Anybody else got any questions?
President, I recommend board approval of the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B Startup Plan Inter-Local Agreement as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B Startup Plan Inter-Local Agreement. Do I have a motion?
No.
We have a motion from Ms. Dale Brazil. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item D. Consideration and Possible Approval of the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B Mr. FICA Alternative Startup Plan Inter-Local Agreement. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Trustees, so this is a... Would be an opportunity to add another benefit, if you will, for our employees as well as our district by considering the approval of a FICA alternative plan for employees. And this specifically speaks to employees who are part-time or seasonal. We have, for example, a couple of San Antonio firemen who teach part-time, you know, to our students who are taking fire science, so they're not full-time employees. Our bus drivers and monitors who are subs or drive part-time, don't drive enough to qualify as full-time. We also have some custodians who substitute and don't work full-time. From time to time, and especially over the summer, we'll bring in some help in our warehouse to move furniture across the district, especially after new construction and that sort of thing, and they're part-time. And so with all of those employees, the district is required to pay Social Security. And for our substitutes, that was also the case. But now that we transitioned our substitutes against us, the district doesn't have to pay that Social Security. So for the groups that I mentioned and a few others that fit that category, the district paid, will pay next year about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in Social Security. Now, the thing about that is, these employees will likely never enjoy the benefit of that, meaning that the district essentially is paying Social Security and is just leaving, and not even the employee actually ever receives that benefit. A FICA alternative plan allows us to opt into a program where we would actually not have to pay Social Security. The employee would pay the contribution to the FICA alternative plan. And because of one being pre-taxed and one being taxed deferred, the net salary would actually be the same. So what an employee per day in income wouldn't be changed, but the district would not have to pay fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to Social Security. And the employee, if they ever left the district, could cash that in. The employee could invest that however they see fit and roll it over to a different investment account if they like. So in essence, this is revenue, and the district no longer has to pay. The employee's paying in a way that doesn't hurt their income, and it's revenue that they can access at their discretion. So we believe it's a win for our employees who are seasonal or part-time. We believe it's a win for the district to not incur those costs that we essentially never get a return on. And so for those reasons, we are bringing it tonight for your consideration.
This money that the district pays, and the employee never sees? Never sees the benefit of it?
Well, they would have to qualify for Social Security. They would have had to meet all their quarters. And of course, with the instability of Social Security over time, it may be a benefit they never realize. This is one way to guarantee that they would absolutely get that benefit. And again, on the other hand, the district would not have to actually pay into Social Security and risk losing those dollars without even the employee ever benefiting. So that's kind of the trade-off. Anything that I missed stated or missed, Q?
No, you got it. Thank you, Rob.
Mayor Goodman, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B FICA Alternative Startup Plan Inter-Local Agreement as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the TCG ESC Region 10 Rams 457B FICA Alternative Startup Plan Inter-Local Agreement. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Coria Barantos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item E. 2020, 2021 District Annual Results Measures. Mr. Scott?
Sir, Mr. President, the annual results measures that the district is bringing to you for consideration tonight can be found in your electronic packet on page 79. The format will look similar to you. The four priorities are the priorities of the district. And what we've done at this point is conclude our comprehensive needs assessments at the district level and establish annual results measures. And every campus and department is currently engaged in their continuous growth process, ensuring that they establish annual results measures that align from the board level to the district level and cascade throughout the organization. And so what we're presenting to you tonight is the evolution of that process. And we feel like while similar in some cases, the annual results measures overall are written much more clearly and that they are really orienting the efforts of all of our campuses and departments in very specific ways that we feel confident will result in the kind of work and the kind of strategies that we want to see. We feel like last year's, while they did improve our alignment, they improved our focus across the organization, they weren't written as well. And so we saw maybe some, some, some variability in the ways in which campuses and departments, you know, really between campuses and departments attempted to, to, to help the district achieve its goals. And so we feel like the ones who are presenting tonight are gonna ensure that not only are they gonna point us all in the same direction, they're gonna offer clarity for our campuses and departments to know what it is we're trying to achieve, and they're all aligned and addressing all of the pillars in our community-based accountability system. Because another thing that's different this year, as we kind of alluded to last year, is that this 2.0 version of continuous growth is using the entire CBAS model as the backbone for our continuous growth process. So with that, if Mr. Fuller, Dr. Fuller has anything to add about the process, about all the work that we've done up to this point, what our campuses and departments are doing, the training and the collaboration that are preparing us for DOT next week to create and complete those that we'll be bringing back to the board to approve.
Yes, we've all heard you working on our approval plan.
You did.
But no, Ms. Juszczyk has done a great job of explaining the process so far. So this is the first step to bring you the district's annual results measures. Next month, I'll be bringing all of the campus annual results measures to you. And I think, hope that we see and hope that you all will notice that the alignment, as Ms. Juszczyk said, will be tighter. It will also be using CBAS as the backbone. And so we're excited next month to share some of the progress that we feel like we've made in the attempt to really weave and meet those hopes and dreams of our community and making sure that our goals and our work aligns with that so that we can help to really showcase that work for, for our students, our community, and for better success there.
So is this also that process that allows the district to respond to these different state reporting requirements in a cohesive fashion without having to rebuild every one?
All of that. So we took it all and we tried to align it so that our campuses didn't have to fill out, it used to be they had to fill out sometimes three different reports. Our now we only have to fill out one and we just tease out the information that they need for those reports.
Thank you.
Much better. It's an evolution. We're getting there, but it's much better.
Ms. Dale, you got anything? Anybody got anything else?
All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the district annual results measures for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the district annual results measures for the 2021 school year. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept superintendent's recommendation.
Motion from Steve Bryant. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Molee Creases. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item F. Consider and take action to order the November 3, 2020 election for single-member districts 3.46.
Trustees, in the next step, in preparation for a November 3, a possible November 3 trustee election for single-member districts 3.46, the district is required to approve an election order for the purposes of calling for, for the purposes of ordering the election. And Bear County Elections will serve as the administrator for both early voting and on election day should we need to follow through with the election. So this would be the order of the election. If you have any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the election order as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the election order as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Claudia Barantos. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Molee Creases. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G. Contract with Bear County Elections for November 3, 2020 trustee election. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. In an effort to ensure that the election is as efficient as it could be for taxpayers as well as for our voters who participate, we're bringing to the board for consideration tonight a contract to consider entering into a partnership with Bear County Elections to administer the election as well as share the cost. Typically, there are several entities that will partner with Bear County Elections for said election. And so for that reason, we know that the cost sharing will reduce the expense to the district, but to what degree, we don't know until we know the number of other entities that have partnered. And so for that reason, we can't bring to you an exact cost, but our estimated cost should we have to partner Bear County Elections and actually have an election, will be in the neighborhood of $40,000 cost to the district. We have to answer questions about partnering Bear County Elections for the November 3 election.
Would we anticipate having to provide early polling stations? Is it too early?
Yeah, I think it's, I think so. I know that depending on the number of entities will determine how many, you know, early polling stations may be required and to what degree to which we might have to provide them. So I think until we know how many entities have partnered, and then the administrator, Jackie Callen, kind of, kind of try to negotiate that with everybody.
I don't want to pass it, but there's a question that we have to apply.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Dale, you got any questions regarding the election?
All right. Mr. President, I recommend board give superintendent or designate approval to enter into a contract with Bear County Elections for the administration of the November 3, 2020 trustee election as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve to enter into a contract with Bear County Elections for the administration of the November 3, 2020 trustee election. Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second? I have a second from Ms. Dale Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. On to the consent agenda. Would any trustee like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Molee Creases. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E. Executive Session. The Board of Trustees on July 16, 2020, beginning at 7:30. 7:32 P. M. convening the closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Department of Meetings Act, Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. So the board, the board agenda is meeting at 8:20 on July 16, 2020. No actions were taken, and the closed meeting.
Chairman Howard, what does the negotiating superintendent contract of the election as presented?
Do I have a motion?
She did.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.